Good evening, everyone. Let the record show that all members of the city council are present this evening with the exception of Councilman Fraylon, who indicated that he may be late or may not be here at all. The copy of the Open Meetings Act is posted in the meeting room and is accessible to members of the public at any time during the course of this meeting. Next item on the agenda is the consent agenda. All items under the consent agenda are considered to be routine by the city council and will be enacted by one motion. There will be no separate discussion of these items unless a council member so requests. First item is Item A, approve agenda as submitted. Item B, receive and place on file all notices pertaining to this meeting. C, receive and place on file all materials having any bearing on this meeting. D, approval of minutes of regular meeting on July 18th, 2022, as on file in the city clerk's office. E, approval of treasurer's report of claims in the amount of $293,332. F, approval of Baswar report of claims in the amount of $53,125. G, approval of change order one, increase in the amount of $22,275. And final pay request in the amount of $71,901 to Pavers Incorporated for bid section one, Prairie Avenue, and bid section two, the alley north of Garfield Street between 10th Street and 11th Street, asphalt construction project as recommended by the Board of Public Works. H, approval of special designated license for B21 LLC for a rib cook-off event on August 27th, 2022, from 9:00 a.m. to 8:00 p.m. at Biggs, 1101 South 6th Street, Beatrice, Nebraska. I, resolution number 6909, granting permission to Stone Hollow Brewing Company and their designees to sell or offer for sale or peddle goods, wares, or merchandise upon Third Street between Court Street and the east-west alley between Court Street and Market Street for a cornhole tournament on August 6th, 2022, between 11:00 a.m. and 8:00 p.m. Item J, resolution number 6915, setting the Board of Equalization hearing for paving District 496 on August 15th, 2022. And Item K, resolution 6916, setting the Board of Equalization hearing for paving District 497 on August 15th, 2022. Is there any item that anyone, council member, wants removed from the consent agenda? Ted?
G.
Item G. Anyone else? All right.
I move that the items listed under the consent agenda, with the exception of Item G, be approved, accepted, and ratified as presented.
Second.
Moved by McLean, seconded by Morgan, that all items listed under the consent agenda, with the exception of Item G, be approved. Your vote, please. And that is approved, seven-zero. Mr. McLean?
I move that Item G, under the consent agenda, be approved, accepted, and ratified as presented.
Second.
Moved by McLean, seconded by Fairbanks, that we further discuss Item G. Ted?
I just need some explanation. The dollar amount, the percentage of the increases, I just need some explanation.
Sure.
Where it started, how it happened, what's going on?
So, Pavers did exactly what we asked them to do. So, the project on Prairie Avenue came in exactly as they bid. The project at the alleyway between 10th and 11th, Garfield and Arthur, came in exactly as bid. The $22,000 increase is because we added that portion of Sargent Street.
For the new development.
The piece for the...
Correct.
Correct.
As I read through that, I couldn't find that. I couldn't, and I went and looked at both of the projects, and I thought, okay.
That's the increase.
All right.
Any other questions about it?
Shouldn't put Kerbin Gutter on that.
Anyone from the audience?
We'll get there.
And your vote, please. And that is approved. Item G is passed, seven-zero. We are going to skip the public hearing on Item Three. The Planning and Zoning Commission tabled that for the time being. That also reference Item 5A, so we will not discuss 5A, just for noteworthy purposes. Next item that we will discuss is the public hearing to consider amending Section 1315 of Article 13 of the zoning ordinance of the city of Beatrice, Nebraska. Ordinance number 93-13 regarding administrative setback adjustments.
So, what you have here is a recommendation to, or sorry, to consider amending Section 1315 regarding administrative setback adjustments. Currently, the code does not have an expiration set for how long those administrative setback adjustments are good for. So, what we did was go back through and clean this up with a six-month expiration period. If you get an administrative setback and construction is not completed within that six months, this does not bar you from coming back and getting that administrative setback again, but you will have to start over if that is not complete within six months, or if the project just completely changes for what it was otherwise approved for.
So, the point of reference in the zoning book, you have setbacks to say how far away you have to build from your property lines, those kind of things. We allow an administrative setback, which means we allow...
Sorry. We know you're here, Bob.
The administrative setback lets you get a little closer to those setbacks. It's done administratively, it's just that I think it's the mayor, the community development director, myself, sign off on it. We allow you to get up to five feet closer. That's the provision that today does not have a time limit in it. And so, we want to make sure that there's a time limit of when those things expire. So, in case your project is not completed, you have to come back in and ask for it, in case something has changed between the time you applied.
With the design and the plan and everything else, it doesn't cost you anything, but...
No.
Just to let us know what's going on. Questions? Anyone from the audience? Mr. McLean?
I move the public hearing be closed at 7:07 p.m.
Second.
Moved by McLean, seconded by Kerr, that the public hearing be closed at 7:07 p.m. Your vote, please. And that is approved, seven-zero. Next is a public hearing to consider amending Section 104 of the subdivision ordinance of the city of Beatrice, Nebraska. Ordinance number 98-6 regarding the jurisdiction and applicability of a subdivision ordinance.
So, what you have here is kind of hand in hand with the next proposed amendment, too. What this does is clarify, the language in there currently does not really clearly state where the subdivision ordinance is applicable. What this does is kind of go in there and clean up the language. It also states that this will apply to subdivisions, so not only the dividing of properties into two or more parcels, but will also cover the combination of two or more parcels into one parcel. The Planning and Zoning Commission did not recommend this to the city council, but I also believe that it's partly because I've neglected or failed to highlight that just because this says that this applies to both the combination and subdivision of parcels, we do still have administrative subdivisions, which are the smaller ones, and then major subdivisions. So, major subdivisions are the combination of six or more parcels. And so, what this essentially does is tell you when you need to plat something. And so, for the major subdivisions, you will still need to plat those. Again, this is just kind of clarifying that this ordinance applies not only to dividing parcels, but bringing them back together, particularly with major subdivisions where you're combining six or more. You will have to plat those. You will not have to plat the smaller administrative subdivisions for combinations.
Questions?
Bob?
So, what did you say the recommendation from Planning and Zoning was?
They recommended, did not recommend this to city council. I also neglected to highlight that we do still have a difference between the major subdivisions and the smaller administrative subdivisions.
So, would it be prudent to go back to Planning and Zoning with those highlights?
Well, they are just recommending, or they can recommend it or not. So, you're getting the same spiel that was heard there, with the exception of that highlight and that distinction. And I believe we've got somebody else coming out to say some more about that.
Okay. Thank you. Any else, anyone else from the council? Any questions from the audience? State your name and address, please, James.
James Nelson, 430 East Hickory Road. My business address is 10th, 25 North 6th Street. I was at the Planning and Zoning Commission. I spoke with them. I oppose this proposed ordinance. Basically, it applies, I'll just pick on me, I'll make it shorter than Planning and Zoning. If my neighbor's house burns down, and I want to buy his property, and I want to combine those properties, I have to plat them. Now, I'm not within the city limits, I'm within the zoning limits, so I don't get to vote for any of you, but your rules apply to me. Plating process, Tobias and Taylor could probably address this better than me. Probably $3,000 to $5,000 in fees, plus the fees with the city of Beatrice. You are including not just lot splits, now you want to include combining lots. It would also apply to the city lots that are already platted. So, if I happen to own a lot here in town, and I want to buy the lot next to me, and I want to combine those lots, because I want one tax statement for whatever reason, I have to replat those two lots that have already been platted. Now, I didn't hear Taylor's explanation at Planning and Zoning. Planning and Zoning didn't hear it, and they recommended not to approve this ordinance. I would specifically ask you not to approve it as well. And if you want to send it back to Planning and Zoning, so that they can digest the new information, I think that would be more prudent.
And just to clarify, too, so it does not apply generally to all combinations. The general language of the jurisdiction and applicability just says generally combinations and divisions, but that does not take away the two separate rules for major subdivisions and where those come in, and the smaller administrative subdivisions.
So, Jim, in your two examples you gave there, one with the in-town one, they would not have to replat because it'd be less than six lots, and so it'd be administrative subdivision. Your example out in the country is if the parcel you end up with is larger than 10 acres, our zoning ordinance says you do not have to replat.
It would be smaller than 10 acres in my area. I'm subject to your rules, but I don't get to vote on who makes the rules. And I would suggest that you return it back to Planning and Zoning with more information, that's accurate information, so they can give you a accurate recommendation.
Gentlemen, thoughts?
You can send it back, but they're just gonna, they're gonna have the same information that we just got, and they're gonna send it back with the recommendation to pass it. I understand the, I served on Planning and Zoning, so I have a little more of a background of it, of course, it's been a long time, but I think the scenario that Jim provided for him in the country, pretty far and few between. And there's, so if he didn't like that, could he go to the Board of Equalization and ask for...
It would be the Board of Adjustments.
Not Equalization.
Right. Board of Adjustments would be the one.
Ask for a...
You could ask for a variance. There are certain statutory requirements that are set by state statutes, that you have to meet to get a variance. They're very difficult to fulfill. While possible, likelihood is probably not very good that they would get approved.
I just don't, I guess I don't see the argument that, that I, for me, if it was me, I'm not Jim, I'm not quite sure, but if I guess if I owned a four-acre plot and a five-acre plot, and I wanted to combine them, I wouldn't be willing to spend the $3,000 so I could get one tax statement. I'd simply get two tax statements. But I'm prepared to vote on it tonight. You guys can do what you want, but if you want to send it back, you can send it back.
Something else? Just a minute, James.
Would it be a little cleaner if we send it back to them, let them give an official determination, then bring it back?
Well, as of it stands now, their recommendation's no. I mean, they did give you a recommendation, which is what's required, but if you want to send it back, that certainly is allowed to.
To me, it looks like it'd be a little cleaner if I had a, it's just, so I had a little bit of understanding, but...
Make a motion.
No.
We can't do that. We gotta close the public hearing first.
Okay.
Something else? James?
I'm gonna say two more things. Ted, like you, I also served on the Planning and Zoning Commission.
Yep.
I don't recall the city council at the time that I served without diving into an explanation, not following the recommendations of Planning and Zoning, especially on a unanimous vote.
Well, I'll guarantee you that when I was chairman of Planning and Zoning for several years, that there was denials by our, when we said no on our recommendation, the city council overrode us.
Yep.
I had that when I was on...
Does happen.
My last comment is, what's the problem you're trying to fix? And that was the same question we asked at 5:00, or I asked at 5:00. What's the problem you're trying to fix? If you don't have a problem, why aren't you leaving it alone?
So, the issue that comes up is when you have parcels in town that are not platted today, they're nondescript parcels. So, those of you who aren't real estate people, instead of being Lot 1, Block 1 of Abe's subdivision, it's the east 25 feet, and the north 10 feet, go three miles over to this tree. I mean, that's kind of the legal descriptions. We were trying to click those cleaned up and get those out of the city, because it's easier to have legal descriptions. We recently had a transaction that sold, they were two nondescript parcels next to each other. Our zoning ordinance did not require them to get platted. We did not require them to get platted. And those are the types of things that we're trying to get cleaned up moving forward.
Yeah. If nothing ever changed, you wouldn't have to worry about this. But things change all the time. And you have somebody that comes in, wants to buy something, wants to develop something, wants to change something, you need to have this in place. That's why, that's why you have to clean it up.
And Tobias, I recognize it's easier to say Lot 1, Block 1 than a nondescript, and you have to use your intellect to follow it around, like the Register of Deeds does, without a problem. Again, what's the problem you're trying to fix, other than make life easier for whoever's reading it?
With all the future buyers of that property, and make it easier for them. There are a number of people who get very confused with nondescript parcels.
And I don't think they've complained to the city, have they?
Yeah, they have.
Thanks, James. Anyone else? Anyone else from the public? All right. Mr. McLean?
I move that the public hearing be closed at 7:17 p.m.
Second.
Moved by McLean, seconded by Billsbuck, that the public hearing be closed at 7:17 p.m. Your vote, please. That is approved. Six in favor and one opposed. That was Mr. Barnard. Next is a public hearing to consider amending Section 221 of the subdivision ordinance of the city of Beatrice, ordinance number 98-6, regarding the definition of subdivisions.
So, again, this kind of goes hand in hand with just applicability. And the last one, we just want to make sure that it's clear that people understand that subdivision doesn't just mean colloquially that you are dividing parcels apart. It also can be the combination of parcels, which is typically how that, practically how that works out. Anyway, we just want to make sure that anybody who's reading that code understands that it's not just simply a division of parcels, but a subdivision can also be the combination of the two. And again, that does not change the rules between major subdivisions and administrative subdivisions. It's just kind of clarifying some language.
From the audience? Mr. McLean?
I move the public hearing be closed at 7:18 p.m.
Second.
Moved by McLean, seconded by Billsbuck, that the public hearing be closed at 7:18 p.m. Your vote, please. And that is approved, seven-zero. Next is a resolution, resolution number 6910, establishing the final allocation for levy authority for property taxes for the airport authority for the fiscal year ending July 30th, 2023.
I move that resolution number 6910 be passed and adopted.
Second.
Moved by McLean, seconded by Kerr, that resolution 6910 be passed and adopted. Discussion?
So, there are tax levy for the airports. I'll go over it, and then I'll let Diana come up and answer any questions you might have. For FY '23, the total tax levy the airport's asking for is .017327. It's a decrease from last year, which was .018098. So, it is a decrease in their tax levy. Their total tax request went from $133,000 to $128,000, largely due to the fact that they have no operating debt out at the airport. So, with no operating debt, they have no debt levy, which then helped bring their tax levy down for this year. Their operating, I see, as far as the budget itself goes, I'll let Diana come up and answer any questions you have on the budget, or if she has anything she wants to talk about the airport in general.
Come on up, Diana, and introduce your guest.
Absolutely.
Come on, have Dennis come on up, please.
Bring your whole crew. Groupies, huh?
Diana Smith, 401 Lincoln Street. Dennis, you want to get...
Dennis Schmidt, 1910 Prairie Avenue.
Dennis is my replacement, so I did want to introduce him to all of you. We're going through the training right now, and of course, September 30th will be my last date.
How long you been on board, Dennis?
Since July 1st.
Okay. Oh, just brand new.
Pretty new.
Perfect. Where you from?
Ford, Nebraska.
Okay.
Moved up here from Latha, Kansas.
Okay.
And his wife is born and raised here in Beatrice, Nebraska.
Cool. Very good.
They're glad to be kind of back into this area.
Glad to have you here.
Thank you.
Does anyone else, you have any questions for me? As you know, every year, I've tried my best to keep the budget the best as we can and be as frugal as we can. It's just getting to the point now that we need to do a little bit more with everything, the economy, and the wages, and salaries, and everything else that's been going on has just been a little bit more of a struggle. But if you have any questions, I'll certainly try to answer.
Diana, your last day is September 30th?
Yep.
After, what, 83 years? How many years was it?
Not quite.
Not quite that much.
But I do want to thank all of you for the years and all of your support through these past years. I have always appreciated the support. And all my years that I have been out there, I had the opportunity to become an employee of the city of Beatrice, so that means a lot, and I felt blessed to have that opportunity all these years. So, for that, thank you very much.
Congratulations on your retirement also.
Thank you.
Stan?
Yes.
Not a question, just a comment. I've been on here a long time, as has Ted, and you have done an outstanding job, Diane, and we thank you for your service to the city of the airport.
Thank you, I so appreciate that.
How many years is it? Diana, how many years is it?
I will be short 11 days of 51 years. So, almost 51, but we're gonna make 50 here now. As airport manager, 20.
Right. Very good.
22, actually, 22. Sorry.
So, you took over...
Enjoy.
You took over from Don, who'd been there 30 years, and you were there 20, so you gotta stick around quite a while.
That's what I keep telling him.
Yeah, it's a longevity thing at this point.
Absolutely.
Yeah, congratulations on your retirement, Diane.
Thank you, Ted.
It's a long time to work anywhere.
Anything else from anybody? All right, thank you very much. Dennis, nice meeting you.
Thank you, it's nice meeting you.
Thank you, guys.
I'm ready to vote. That is approved, seven-zero. Resolution 6910 has been passed and adopted. Next is resolution number 6911, designating the city clerk as the city's agent to grant or deny permission for applicants to sell or offer for sale or peddle goods, wares, or merchandise upon public property owned by the city in accordance with certain criteria.
I move that resolution number 6911 be passed and adopted.
Second.
Moved by McLean, seconded by Morgan, that resolution 6911 be passed and adopted. Tobias?
So, earlier, it might have been this year, it might have been late last year, we changed the rules on SDL, Special Designated Liquor Licenses. And the rule that the council came up with is if somebody had had one before, they could simply go to administration, the city clerk, and have them approve an SDL license moving forward. We're great. You saw earlier tonight, you had an SDL come through for the brewery. Well, they've obviously had one before, but this time, they also asked to sell goods on city property. Selling goods on city property requires city council approval. And so, what we proposed tonight, and it's here, it's also in a resolution later, is that you grant the city clerk permission to sell goods on city property under those same types of situations. So, in that case, when the brewery come, already approved the SDL under a rule that was approved here before by the city council, we can close the street down administratively for them, and now we'd also allow the selling of goods for them on city property as well administratively. So, the idea is just to kind of clean a few of those things up, and make it easier for the businesses that are out there.
I understand it makes it easier, excuse me, I understand this makes it easier for the businesses, but where's that line getting drawn? I mean, we have, is it, you have things that are retail, does it go to a permanent thing? I mean, is this, are we limiting this in a timeframe? It is special, kind of like a special use permit, I mean, where's the, where's the line drawn on that, Tobias?
The way we have this worded...
I read it. I didn't get it out of there.
It says... Issuance when such applicant has previously applied for permission, so they've come and asked before, or when it's an SDL.
Okay.
So, those would be the two times.
Okay. Does it give a timeframe that it limits it just to the, to the event?
No, there's nothing in there that limits it to a certain event. All events are a little bit different. Generally, if it's an SDL, it's tied for a certain night.
Okay.
And so, I would assume that, I mean, we would just apply for the same time period.
Okay. You understand my concern. My concern is that you grant something that becomes a permanent fixture.
Right.
So, okay.
Any questions, concerns, from the audience? James?
My concern is, the way it's written as proposed, it's approve or deny. I oppose the denial. With all due respect to, and take names off of it, if the city council or the mayor has approved prior sale, why would you appoint the city clerk the ability to deny?
I don't know that she is going to deny it if the city council approves it.
Under this proposed ordinance, Mayor, you say...
I don't say.
...the purpose of granting or denying.
Well, if she doesn't grant it, that would be a denial.
And they still have the ability... Then they still have the ability to come back here and ask us for it, James. This does, it doesn't, it doesn't...
Doesn't end there.
Doesn't end there.
Well, it doesn't?
No. Well, you weren't here when we discussed it originally, and we passed the first one. You weren't here to do that. So, but no, if they, no, it doesn't, doesn't end there. They can come back. They're not, they're not the final say. We are.
Okay, so let's pick on the one that you granted tonight, Stone Hollow. They have previously been granted permission. So, when do they want to have the event? August 6th? If the city clerk would have denied, would there have been time to get to the council to get here?
No, and that's the way we're trying to make it, so it's administratively, they can do it, because we have people who come in and ask on August 5th if they can sell goods on August 6th, and today, we have to tell them no. This at least gives them an opportunity for them to say yes and move their projects along.
And Tobias, I agree with that, when you grant the city clerk approval, but I disagree when you grant them denial authority, and then they're too late to come to the council.
If they ask on August 5th, they're too late anyhow, and it happens more often than you'd like.
I would imagine it does. I disagree with giving the city clerk a non-elected official denial authority. That's my point.
So noted. Thanks.
Doesn't really give them denial. In that scenario, it doesn't really, I mean, if they come in on the 5th and they ask for it, and it would be too late to bring it to the council anyway. So, you're, they're not losing anything, they're not losing anything because they didn't have anything.
No.
So, they would still have to come to the council later, so...
And it's for an SDL. SDL, you have to provide it like 10 days before.
Right.
So, that would give them time to grant here.
Yep.
Any other questions? From the audience? And your vote, please. That is approved, seven-zero. Resolution 6911 has been passed and approved. Next is resolution 6912, entering into a lease agreement with John A. Hido Jr. and Rita R. Hido, for the purpose of using a portion of a city-owned right-of-way, for the purpose of using said right-of-way for a raised patio.
I move that resolution number 6912 be passed and adopted.
Second.
Moved by McLean, seconded by Billsbuck, that resolution 6912 be passed and adopted.
This is a lease at 323 Court Street. I'm sure everybody's very familiar with that particular piece of property. The Hidos have approached us, asking to lease a portion of our right-of-way. They want to add a patio to it. This would be on the east side of the building. And further to the south, if anybody's familiar with that building, there's a door farther back on the south side of that particular property. It would start about there, that patio would, and wrap back around to the south side of the building itself. They permitted some drawings. Everything complies with ADA. We'd have plenty of room, that type of stuff. The lease calls for basically a year-to-year lease that AMAC renews for one dollar a year. And then we have the right to give permission if something comes up or if we need into that area for utility work.
So there is room on the sidewalk for wheelchairs and such?
Yes.
Okay. Does it need to be year-to-year? Can you do multiple years? Does it need to be year-to-year?
Since it's your property, I would suggest year-to-year.
Okay. So with the year-to-year thing, do we have to inspect it every year?
No. We can. I mean, obviously, it's out in the open, and we can inspect it, but there's nothing.
Everything deteriorates.
Right, nothing requires us to.
Yeah, we have a right to enter onto that, to inspect it, which is standard in all of our leases, so.
Okay. I'm good then.
What material is this being made of? Is it gonna be a concrete one, like down on Stone Hollow?
No, I believe it's gonna be wood. They want more for ADA accessibility, so I believe it's gonna be a wood ramp and patio.
Any other questions?
Good for them.
Any comments from the audience? And your vote, please. That is approved seven zero. Resolution sixty-nine twelve has been passed and adopted. Next is resolution number sixty-nine thirteen, executing the loan agreement promissory note, personal guarantee, deed of trust, and any other necessary documents between the city and Jeffrey B. Hubka and Shelley K. Hubka for a direct loan in the amount of twenty thousand dollars as part of the downtown revitalization program and the CDBG grant twenty-one DTR zero zero four.
I move that resolution number sixty-nine thirteen be passed and adopted.
Second.
Moved by McLean, seconded by Kerr, that resolution sixty-nine thirteen be passed and adopted.
So once again, these are part of your downtown revitalization grants. As everybody recalls, we got a grant from DED. If for some reason they do not keep the improvements, we have to pay the state back. And so that's why these are all set up as forgivable loans. If they keep the improvements for five years, the loan's forgiven. So all the next four that you have here are set up the same way. This particular one is for the Hubkas. It's at five oh eight Court Street. The amount is twenty thousand dollars. They're looking for electrical and plumbing upgrades and interior carpentry work all to occur on the second floor. What it really does is start to get that second floor ready for some type of development, whether that is a living space, whether it's commercial space, but it starts to open that floor up for some other type of development.
Questions, comments from the audience? And your vote, please. That is approved seven zero. Resolution sixty-nine thirteen has been passed and adopted. Next is resolution sixty-nine fourteen, executing the loan agreement promissory note, personal guarantee, deed of trust, and any other necessary documents between the city and Hido Properties LLC and Todd A. Hido and Sony Hido for a direct loan in the amount of thirty thousand dollars as part of the downtown revitalization program and CDBG grant twenty-one DTR zero zero four.
I move that resolution number sixty-nine fourteen be passed and adopted.
Second.
By McLean, seconded by Morgan, that resolution sixty-nine fourteen be passed and adopted.
This one is with Hido Properties, one twenty-two North Fish Street. Many probably will probably know it as Tall Tree Chastings. It's that building. Thirty thousand dollars. They're looking to repair stucco, replace the storefront window and doors, cut out new windows on the second floor, get them closer to what they were originally. Don't know if they can get back exactly, but closer. And then also some roof repairs as well.
Questions? Comments from the audience? And your vote, please. That is approved seven zero. Resolution sixty-nine fourteen has been passed and adopted. Next is resolution sixty-nine seventeen, executing the loan agreement promissory note, personal guarantee, deed of trust, and any other necessary documents between the city and Greg Zerbeninsky and Casey Zerbeninsky for a direct loan in the amount of thirty thousand dollars as part of the downtown revitalization program and CDBG grant twenty-one DTR zero zero four.
I move that resolution number sixty-nine seventeen be passed and adopted.
Second.
Moved by McLean, seconded by Billsbuck, that resolution sixty-nine seventeen be passed and adopted.
This is seven thirteen Court Street. Thirty-one thousand dollars. They're looking to make storefront improvements, which include reinstalling the transom windows and refinishing the storefront, tuck pointing the building, and installing a firewall and electrical upgrades.
Questions? Anyone from the audience? And your vote, please. And that is approved seven zero. Resolution sixty-nine seventeen has been passed and adopted. And the last one is resolution sixty-nine eighteen, executing the loan agreement promissory note, personal guarantee, deed of trust, and any other necessary documents between the city and Amy L. Reed and a direct loan in the amount of thirty thousand dollars, or, beg your pardon, thirty-eight thousand dollars as part of the downtown revitalization program and CDBG grant twenty-one DTR zero zero four.
I move that resolution number sixty-nine eighteen be passed and adopted.
Second.
Moved by McLean, seconded by Morgan, that resolution sixty-nine eighteen be passed and adopted.
This is at seven eleven Court Street. Improvements here include facade repairs, masonry repairs, repairs to the polling drug sign itself, getting that brought back, doors and windows, and a fire escape being added to the property.
Don't they have to keep the?
The polling drug sign has become historic, and yes. I'd let Michael go into those details if you wish to have more on that one, but.
No, that's okay. Okay. Any comments, questions from the audience? And your vote, please. And that is approved seven zero. Resolution sixty-nine eighteen has been passed and adopted. Next is an ordinance amending section, I beg your pardon, we're not going to go into that one because that corresponds with three A, which we did not discuss. So we'll go to five B. Ordinance amending section thirteen fifteen of Article thirteen of the zoning ordinance of the city of Beatrice. Ordinance number ninety-four thirteen regarding the administrative setback requirements.
I move that said ordinance be given number twenty-two dash fourteen. The title thereof be approved, the rules be suspended, and said ordinance be read only by number three times tonight.
Second.
Moved by McLean, seconded by Morgan, that the ordinance be given number twenty-two dash fourteen. The title thereof approved, the rules be suspended, and the ordinance be read by number only three times tonight. A motion to suspend the rules is not debatable. Your vote, please. That is approved seven zero. Ordinance number twenty-two dash fourteen by number the first time. Ordinance twenty-two dash fourteen by number the second time. And ordinance twenty-two dash fourteen by number the third and final time.
I move that ordinance number twenty-two dash fourteen be passed and approved.
Second.
Moved by McLean, seconded by Morgan, that ordinance number twenty-two dash fourteen be passed and approved. Discussion?
Again, this is just the six-month time limit on the administrative setback adjustment. That or if the work significantly changes from what it was originally approved for.
Any further questions, gentlemen? From the audience? And your vote, please. That is approved seven zero. Ordinance twenty-two dash fourteen has been passed and approved. Next is ordinance amending section one oh four of the subdivision ordinance of the city of Beatrice, Nebraska. Ordinance number ninety-eight dash six regarding the jurisdiction and applicability of the subdivision ordinance.
I move that said ordinance be given number twenty-two dash fifteen. The title thereof be approved, the rules be suspended, and said ordinance be read by number only three times tonight.
Second.
Moved by McLean, seconded by Kerr, that the ordinance be given number twenty-two dash fifteen. The title thereof approved, the rules suspended, and the ordinance be read by number only three times tonight. Motion to suspend the rules is not debatable. Your vote, please. That is approved seven zero. Ordinance number twenty-two dash fifteen by number the first time. Ordinance twenty-two dash fifteen by number the second time. And ordinance number twenty-two dash fifteen by number the third and final time.
I move that ordinance number twenty-two dash fifteen be passed and approved.
Second.
Moved by McLean, seconded by Morgan, that ordinance twenty-two dash fifteen be passed and approved. Further discussion? James?
Mr. Mayor and Council, I realize that suspending the rules and reading by number only and putting this on the fast train is appropriate, non-debatable, and non-discussable. However, you have bypassed public opinion, public input, and you have bypassed the planning and zoning recommendation on this motion. I would ask you to reconsider and send it back to planning and zoning and provide the public the ability to know what's going on without suspending the rules.
But we did have a public hearing.
I understand that. And here.
Two public hearings, actually.
Mr. Mayor, here is my bone. You have published an agenda that's available to the public. Your agenda packet is not readily available to the public.
But it is available.
If they make a call, if they come to the city council and look, or the city offices and look at it, it is not available on the website. And Mr. Rivera, I understand you made an error by telling me it was. It is not available on the website until after the meeting is adjourned. So the public has no ability to see why you're doing what you're proposing to do until after you've taken action the day after the meeting. So I would respectfully request that you send this back and let the public have the ability, if they want to, have input before you take action.
Anyone else?
Just a point of clarification. We still vote.
Of course.
The vote could be yes, the vote could be no.
That is correct.
And we can still amend it.
Well, could be amended. I guess, from my perspective, because we do have planning and zoning, if they did not get all the information, since it's not time-sensitive, I would say it goes back to planning and zoning. I'm not saying I wouldn't vote for it, or will vote for it, but until they have that opportunity, because it's not time-sensitive, I will probably vote no.
So we're still taking a vote? Do you understand that?
Yeah, I understand that. My request is that you vote no, send it back for more input.
I get it. Any comments?
I kind of agree with Bob and his reasonings. I kind of like to have a go back.
Like you said, it'd be clean.
And your vote, please. And that is approved, that is, I'm sorry, that is denied, six to one. Ted Fairbanks voting in favor. There are six votes opposed. We'll send it back to planning and zoning. Try to get some additional information to them. So ordinance number twenty-two dash fifteen, as it stands, has failed. Next is ordinance number twenty-two dash twenty, I beg your pardon, section two twenty-one of the subdivision ordinance of the city of Beatrice. Ordinance number ninety-eight dash six regarding the definition of subdivisions.
I move that said ordinance be given number twenty-two dash sixteen. The title thereof be approved, the rules be suspended, and the said ordinance be read by number only three times tonight.
Second.
Moved by McLean, seconded by Billsbuck, that the ordinance be given number twenty-two dash sixteen. The title thereof approved, the rules suspended, and the ordinance be read by number only three times tonight. Motion to suspend the rules is not debatable. Your vote, please. That is approved seven zero. Ordinance number twenty-two dash sixteen by number the first time. Ordinance number twenty-two dash sixteen by number the second time. And ordinance number twenty-two dash sixteen by number the third and final time.
I move that ordinance number twenty-two dash sixteen be passed and approved.
Second.
Moved by McLean, seconded by Billsbuck, that ordinance twenty-two dash sixteen be passed and approved. Further discussion? From the audience? And your vote, please. And that is approved seven zero. Ordinance twenty-two sixteen has been passed.
Eight, eight, he's, Tim's here. Tim showed up.
Beg your pardon, eight zero. Ordinance number twenty-two dash sixteen has been passed and approved. Snuck in.
Yeah, he did.
Next is ordinance amending section five sixty-one of the Beatrice City Code regarding procedures to appeal a dangerous or potentially dangerous animal determination.
I move that said ordinance be given number twenty-two dash seventeen. The title thereof be approved, the rules be suspended, and the said ordinance be read by number only three times tonight.
Second.
Moved by McLean, seconded by Morgan, that the ordinance be given number twenty-two dash seventeen. The title thereof approved, the rules suspended, and the ordinance be read by number only three times tonight. Motion to suspend the rules, again, is not debatable. Your vote, please. That is approved eight zero. Ordinance number twenty-two dash seventeen by number the first time. Ordinance twenty-two dash seventeen by number the second time. And ordinance twenty-two dash seventeen by number the third and the final time.
I move that ordinance number twenty-two dash seventeen be passed and approved.
Second.
Moved by McLean, seconded by Morgan, that the ordinance number twenty-two dash seventeen be approved. Tobias?
So what we're proposing in this amendment is, if you'll notice, mostly it has to do with dates. And before, we said it was ten days to do this and twenty days to do that. We just clarified it's calendar days or business days, just to make sure there's no discrepancy or uncertainty as to how many days somebody has to appeal or how long the appeal board has to hear it, some of those things. The other change we added in there was, if you appeal your dangerous dog or your potentially dangerous animal, it states this, the chief of police, the city administrator, and the mayor who hear those hearings. There have been times when one of those three is gone, and we've had somebody else sit in on those hearings. So we add the word "or" there does need. So that way, we can keep things moving along, so we don't have to wait till maybe one of those individuals comes back. Or, you know, recently, you had the retirement of Chief Lang. If it happened during that time period and you didn't have a replacement for him, would you have been able to fulfill it? So that's the proposed changes tonight.
Questions? Comments? Anyone from the audience? And your vote, please. And that is approved eight zero. Ordinance twenty-two dash seventeen's been passed and approved. Next is an ordinance amending section seven three dash three twenty and seven three twenty-seven of the Beatrice City Code regarding appeal procedures relating to decisions of code officials.
I move that said ordinance be given number twenty-two dash eighteen. The title thereof be approved, the rules be suspended, and said ordinance be read by number only three times tonight.
Second.
Moved by McLean, seconded by Billsbuck, that the ordinance be given twenty-two dash eighteen. The title thereof approved, rules suspended, and the ordinance be read by number three times tonight. Motion to suspend the rules is not debatable. Your vote, please. That is approved eight zero. Ordinance number twenty-two dash eighteen by title the first time, a bigger by number. Ordinance twenty-two dash eighteen by number the third, a second time. And ordinance number twenty-two dash eighteen by number the third and final time.
I move that ordinance number twenty-two dash eighteen be passed and approved.
Second.
Moved by McLean, seconded by Billsbuck, that ordinance twenty-two dash eighteen be passed and approved.
So the two changes we're proposing here is, one, that if so, if somebody has a discrepancy or disagreement with what the code official says, they make an appeal to the Board of Appeals. What we put in here is that the Board of Appeals cannot make any decision or ruling that would be in violation of Beatrice City Code or zoning ordinance or state law. I think that probably goes without saying, but we just made sure we put that in there, so there's no questions. The other change we have in here, or we're proposing, is that if somebody has an appeal, they have to show up in person for the appeal hearing.
Questions? Anyone from the audience?
Mayor, my only question on this one is, so when we have COVID again, does that mean that we cannot have these hearings if they can't show up and everybody else is appearing by Zoom?
James, we can be flexible with situations like that, especially if it's a public health issue. I think common sense will yield to that situation.
I would hope common sense would.
That's my response. Any other comments? And your vote, please. And that is approved eight zero. Ordinance number twenty-two dash eighteen has been passed and adopted. Next is ordinance amending section thirteen dash thirty-eight of the Beatrice City Code regarding permission to sell goods, wares, or merchandise on city-owned property.
I move that said ordinance be given number twenty-two dash nineteen. The title thereof be approved, the rules be suspended, and said ordinance be read by number only three times tonight.
Second.
Moved by McLean, seconded by Morgan, that the ordinance be given number twenty-two dash nineteen. Title thereof approved, the rules suspended, and the ordinance be read by number only three times tonight. Suspend the rules is not debatable. Your vote, please. That is approved eight zero. Ordinance number twenty-two dash nineteen by number the first time. Ordinance number twenty-two dash nineteen by number the second time. And ordinance twenty-two dash nineteen by number the third and the final time.
I move that said ordinance number twenty-two dash nineteen be passed and approved.
Second.
Motion by McLean, seconded by Morgan, that ordinance twenty-two dash nineteen be passed and approved. Tobias?
This code section is the one that states that if somebody wants to sell goods on city property, they have to get permission from the city council. We add the word "or" resolution, so it says, unless permission is granted otherwise by a city code. That refers you back to the food truck ordinance that we talked about before, where if you granted that license, they had permission to sell on property. Or by resolution, that refers to the resolution you passed agreed tonight, granting administration to approve selling goods on property under certain restrictions.
Questions, comments from the audience? And your vote, please. And that is approved eight zero. Ordinance twenty-two dash nineteen has been passed and approved. Next is item H, ordinance amending section sixteen dash six twenty-three. H, ordinance amending sections sixteen dash six twenty-three dash one, and sixteen dash six twenty-three dash two of the city code regarding notices to remove, and notices of city intention to remove, and abate junk vehicles.
I move that said ordinance be given number twenty-two dash twenty. The title thereof be approved, the rules be suspended, and said ordinance be read by number only three times tonight.
Second.
Moved by McLean, seconded by Morgan, that the ordinance be given number twenty-two dash twenty. The title thereof approved, rules suspended, and the ordinance be read by number only three times tonight. Again, a motion to suspend the rules is not debatable. Your vote, please. That is approved, eight zero. Ordinance twenty-two dash twenty by number the first time, ordinance twenty-two dash twenty by number the second time, and ordinance twenty-two dash twenty by number the third and the final time.
I move that ordinance number twenty-two dash twenty be passed and approved.
Second.
Moved by McLean, seconded by Morgan, that ordinance twenty-two dash twenty be passed and approved. Tobias?
So your, weed notice that you have out there today says that if somebody's in violation, you give notice by personal service or certified mail. If unsuccessful, you post or publish on the property. We're proposing the same rules for junk vehicles. Junk vehicles, again, we've tried service, give them notice by personal service or certified mail. If there's unsuccessful, this, then it'll allow us to either post the property, or publish notice in the paper. That's the biggest changes in here. We also have some typos that we're fixing with regards to one subsection that was referred to. And we're also adding provision in here that if you're given notice once on a particular vehicle, it's deemed continual notice for a period of one year. So you can't just move that property around town. Notice goes with it as well.
And that's not really a change. The, the notice to remove already had that continuing notice. We're just making sure that it applies to both types of notices, notice to cities intent to remove as well.
Okay. Questions? The audience? End your vote, please. And that is approved, eight zero. Ordinance number twenty-two dash twenty has been passed and approved. Next is an ordinance amending section twenty-six dash forty-six of the Beatrice City Code regarding the disconnection of utilities for non-payment.
I move that said ordinance be given number twenty-two dash twenty-one. The title thereof be approved, the rules be suspended, and said ordinance be read by number only three times tonight.
Second.
Moved by McLean, seconded by Billsbuck, that the ordinance be given number twenty-two dash twenty-one. The title thereof be approved, and the rules suspended, the ordinance be read by number only three times tonight. Motion to suspend the rules is not debatable. Your vote, please. That is approved, eight zero. Ordinance twenty-two dash twenty-one by number the first time, twenty-two dash twenty-one by number the second time, and ordinance twenty-two dash twenty-one by number the third and the final time.
I move that ordinance number twenty-two dash twenty-one be passed and approved.
Second.
Moved by McLean, seconded by Billsbuck, that ordinance twenty-two dash twenty-one be passed and approved.
So your disconnect notice on your utilities indicated that if you didn't pay your utility bill at one location, the city could shut off all of your utility bills. So whatever other locations you had. We just want to make sure we include that into the city code. It's been the disconnect notice for decades. It's been the practice for decades. We're just making sure it gets included in the city code.
Ending things up a little bit.
Yeah. As I read this, I, I came, I realized that information I don't know. How often do we do this?
Shut people off?
Yeah.
Oh, we're trying to think, on the monthly report, we have a listing in there and...
Ninety?
Ninety a month, yeah. It's in your monthly report. I'll, the next one will point it out to you, so.
The eighty pages of it? I'm sure I've overlooked it.
It's on forty-seven. Tobias?
Tobias?
Yeah.
A question. Say you have somebody that has some rental properties, and they don't pay their, their utility bills. All those rental properties will be shut off also?
Depends on how they have it set up. So landlords have a different set out there that they can either give notice, or have it turned over to their name, or do some stuff like that. Most landlords, the utilities are not in their name. It's in somebody else's name. But it depends on, on how they have, like, or, how the applications are.
If they, if they have them all in their own names, and they have a rental for, say, a, a mother with, with minor children, we certainly, in the, in the winter or summer, we certainly don't want to go, is there, is there an exception to that if, if we find out that? I'm sure that we, we're not cold hard enough to shut them down.
Very rarely do we ever have this situation come up, where we shut off more than one location. Doesn't happen very often. Most of the time, people get utilities in their name, and, and therefore, it's not an issue.
Okay. Any other comments? James?
When I get the hint that you're tired of hearing from me, what's the definition of utilities? Strictly electrical, water, sewer, or does it include Mars?
It would include all three, or all four of those.
So if you're delinquent on your Mars bill, because the card didn't go through, you're going to shut off the electricity at another location?
What you're thinking of is a commercial customer. Only a commercial customer would have that issue happen. At your house, your Mars bill is part of your utility bill. So therefore, either you would pay none of that bill, including your electric, water, and sewer, or you would pay all of that bill.
So under the current city code, even though it's in your policy that you can, under the current city code, if they're delinquent on their Mars bills, because the card didn't go through, you cannot shut off their electricity under the current code?
No, the current code allows us to shut off electricity if they don't pay their Mars bill. That's already in the city code.
And just to...
Why do you need this, then, if it's already in the city code?
Because this is a different location, and we want to make sure it's in all of the locations.
Okay. So going back to Mr. Kerr's question, somebody hasn't paid their Mars bill at a commercial location, but they also have a house here in town. You're going to be able to shut off their electricity on their house?
If the applications are in the same name, yes. But again, you have to remember, before you get to that point, you've gotten several notices in the mail that lets you know that...
Supposedly you've gotten the seven-day disconnect notice, is that correct?
Correct. You've gotten plenty of notices.
And you haven't sent the seven-day disconnect notice, not supposed to have it shut off, are you?
Under, under the electricity, yes. We have certain procedures we have to go through. If we follow all those procedures, then yes, your utilities get shut off.
And the seven-day notice is, also applies to Mars?
I would have to check, but usually not, no. Because Mars is, depends. Again, you're talking about a commercial customer. It's different than a residential customer.
And just to add a note for, to let the city council know that the only time that this has ever come up for a commercial customer, having electricity shut off for non-payment of Mars bills, it was not simply a one-time matter of card not going through. It was several months. We're talking seven to nine months of non-payment, phone calls, letters sent, no payments.
And Mr. Rivera, with all due respect, it was two letters that went out, and there was no seven-day disconnect notice when the electricity was shut off to the commercial establishment. I would respectfully request that the city council not vote on this one until they get the background of what, I'll just say it, what tracks we're trying to cover.
Okay. Anyone else? End your vote, please. That is approved, eight zero. Ordinance number twenty-two dash twenty-one has been passed and approved. Next item is the public forum. Purpose of the public forum is for the presentation of an item by the general public to the city council for consideration at a later date. No discussion or action will be taken by the city council at this time. Is there anyone here for the public forum? Okay, moving on to discussions and reports, and we have Main Street's quarterly report. A couple, a couple of individuals representing Main Street. Michael?
Anyone who'd like a paper version of what's on your, inside your packet? I can certainly provide that, and see if you had some. Yes, thank you, Mayor. Michael Sowden, Main Street, Beatrice. And I know you've already had a long meeting, so I'll try to keep this relatively concise. We have recently completed the third quarter of your fiscal year. This would be primarily, looking at it, would be the months of April through June, is what we're, we're focusing on here. So provided you guys with this report. Has our executive summary there at the beginning. Talks about a, kind of a little quick snapshot, and goes into a little more specifics on some of the areas of focus with this quarter. As I kind of, I think I stated back, oh, probably back in January, one of our first reports, we as Main Street definitely have been pretty busy with a variety of things. When it comes to community events, our two busiest, busiest quarters happen to be October through December with the holiday season, and then the, the most previous quarter from April to June with things like homestead days and, and things like that in it, from a community event standpoint. With this last quarter being one of those busy months, we've also had some other things that really heated up during that time. The Kensington had announced their closure in the quarter pre, previous to that, but a lot of the visits amongst developers, and a lot of the work to try to fill that certainly occurred in this last quarter, and certainly became an unexpected thing to, to fill the, the quarter with, with a little more work than was maybe anticipated, or something that we would certainly wish to have as a community. That being said, we've focused on a variety of other things as well. We have really been working a lot to improve our numbers with the entrepreneur and business and property owner visits. Our property owner visits are significantly above the number that we had talked to you guys about, and that's largely due to that DTR grant, as you guys just approved several more of those here this evening. I think we had a total of fourteen that got recommended, but thirteen that are still moving forward. And so that's definitely been a, a welcomed program, but certainly has put us in front of a lot more property owners than maybe business owners as part of that plan. But we will be finishing up the, the visits with business owners over this quarter, this next month or two, this next sixty days, as we finish out our fiscal year agreement with you guys, is some of the ones that we have a little more flexibility to be able to get out, and right into the front of, of business owners, and be able to see how things are going with them. As we've been talking to our business community, there's no doubt that we're starting to see some of the pressures that have been resulting from the recent pandemic, also from the increased inflation and some of the economic concerns. And so that is definitely something we're going to be trying to delve into more. We are seeing that some business sectors are still doing really phenomenally well, and others are really starting to feel a little bit of a pinch. Obviously, the result of the Kensington is, is a very stark example of that. And so with that, I can certainly talk a lot more about this, but we've had a lot of, a lot of great things going on. You guys hopefully have seen the new downtown revitalization plan that was completed by UNL students back in May. And so we have that. As Tobias has pointed out with, and what you guys have approved, the DTR grants have certainly been something that's taken a lot of city time, and we appreciate all the time you guys have put into getting these grants going. We've been spending a lot of time with property owners, but at this point, it's a lot of administrative time within the city trying to get these rolling forward with you, and us doing some of the cleanup conversations on the sideline. So definitely appreciate that you guys have created that opportunity for the community. Farmers market's in full swing. We've had several different events, including our national Main Street conference. Just a, a lot of things happening. The Creative District, Morgan has been working heavily on that, that Creative District. We've now met with the Nebraska Arts Council twice. We are moving that along. Hopefully, if, if we stay on track, we'll have our workbook turned in to them by Labor Day, and be probably within the new calendar year be eligible for the two hundred and fifty thousand dollars, up to two hundred and fifty thousand dollars a year worth of grants that can be used for a variety of things. So we're hoping for designation possibly as early as December, but making pretty significant progress on that. And so those are kind of some of the big areas. Certainly lots more that we can cover, but again, you guys have had a long meeting, and so I'm open to your questions.
Questions? Yeah, Michael, one thing I've stressed since the beginning of the year is the, this, the marketing training for small businesses. I see that in the first seven months, we've done ten, ten sessions, and we got fifty-eight for the, the rest of the year.
Yep.
Is, is fifty-eight actually doable?
I think so. We've already got them planned out. Again, this next two, we've got a lot that we're trying to pack into this quarter, but it's a lot less impacted by other extenuous things like homestead days and things like that. And so it's going to be, certainly going to, to keep us busy. There's no doubt about that. When you see fifty-eight, and we've got sixty days, we're going to have to do multiples in most of these days coming up. And that's certainly part of our plan. Will we get to all fifty-eight? There's a chance that we may not by the end of the quarter. But will we hit the target of what we had worked with you guys? I think we, we certainly are still planning for that.
I mean, that, that is the core of the, of the downtown, and I want to make sure that we're taking care of these, these people. They're doing a lot to better their businesses and provide a place for our citizens and, and visitors to shop, and I want to make sure that we keep that focus going.
And we certainly share that, that with you, and, and we hope to, to get that accomplished. We've definitely got it prepared for this next sixty days.
What's the reception that you're getting for these in-store visits?
Yeah. So, you know, there's some folks that, they're all are pretty open to wanting to have conversations. We've had some that have really embraced some of the different suggestions, and just some of the aid that we've been able to offer. Sometimes it's more just knowing there's someone there to, to help. There's definitely a few that are like, oh, man, I really need some recommendations. I want some help on mapping out a plan. We've had some that have certainly embraced that, and we've had a few others that, as we kind of look back, you know, maybe thirty, sixty days afterwards, that we aren't always seeing it being implemented. And so that's something that we will circle back to those folks, and just make sure that, you know, was there something that was maybe incomplete, or that they, they weren't able to activate, and just kind of understand where that is. But for the most part, it, it has been effective, and it's helped us understand where things are. Hopefully, it's been effective for the business owner to feel confident that they're getting the aid and just support from this community, and, and being able to move forward and have a successful business.
So in your toolbox, when you go out, do you let them know about different programs that are available, like the, the mentoring program that the University of Nebraska offers? SBA, low-interest stuff?
Yeah, it, it really is...
Rural development?
Certainly. It's really dependent upon, obviously, what their needs are. Some of them, it's just, hey, I, I really need help with figuring out Google business listing. All right, very specific, small things. If they are needing deeper assistance, maybe they're needing to retweak their business plan. They're looking at trying to maximize a few other things, change the business plan to, you know, take on a new opportunity, then certainly, that's something that, most of the time, we're, those resources that you mentioned, we're sharing with newer entrepreneurs that really aren't sure how to begin. A lot of our business owners don't want that in-depth level of, of work. They're wanting something that's kind of plug and go, right now, that I can start doing tomorrow. And so that's where we're seeing a little bit of that. But certainly, if they ask, we have that in our toolbox.
Has there been a lot of use on, on the river with the new river access?
Yeah.
Driving by there and they've seen people?
I, I definitely have seen some people out there. We don't have a great way to track that right now. You know, there's no, you know, not like a road that you have the, you know, the cable across that you can put out for a month and, and kind of track that. That would be interesting for us to be able to, to have a sense of, of those numbers. I know that this summer, the number of phone calls that have been coming into our office asking about it, and I'm sure that for city staff, you guys have probably been having a lot of calls too, has certainly increased. We've been sending out a little, I've kind of now got a, or entered email that we've been responding with inquiries that come in on social media, and by, by phone or email. That way, we can try to provide them information. Usually their question is, where's the right exit point? We still need to complete some signage down there at the access, so there's a little bit more clarity on things. Especially right now, it's been a little bit dry, and so there are parts that can be a little bit shallow. And so just trying to make sure that people know where to look at to understand the depth of river has been a, a big part of our aid to the community over the last month or so while it's been drier. But definitely some excitement about the river, you know, that people is there. Hopefully, as word spreads, and we need to start, as you were mentioning, just the marketing of businesses, also marketing those types of amenities that we now offer in our community.
Any other questions? All right, Michael, thank you very much. Appreciate it.
Thank you, everyone.
All right. Our next regular scheduled meeting is going to be on August fifteenth. We are going to have a work session. There are five Mondays in the month of August. Our work session will be on August the twenty-ninth. With that, Mr. McLean?
I meant the meeting be adjourned at eight oh nine PM.
Second. Moved by Mort, uh, moved by McLean, seconded by Frayland, that the meeting be adjourned at eight oh nine PM. Your vote, please. That is approved, eight zero. Thank you very much, everybody. you very much, everybody.